Okay, I'll call the March 19th, 2018 Lathrop Village City Council meeting to order. I'd like to invite the clerk to take roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, you have a quorum?
All right, I'd like to invite all who wish to join us as the pludulations.
Pludulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, excuse me, please, but can we excuse Mayor Garrett and Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
We're allowed to do that today?
Hi, brother. Mark and Dennis aren't excused.
Okay, I want to begin as usual with the consent agenda, take a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is on pages three to thirteen of your packet.
So move, support.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion?
No.
All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is, the agenda is approved. Next, move on to the dispersment reports. So the council will next consider the approval of the reports, which are...
If we can just excuse the council people, do a motion in support of the excuse thing. Yeah, at this point.
Oh, okay.
We thought you just detained it, so...
Oh, we have to do a motion.
I would offer the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
We excuse them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now the council will next consider a motion of, to approve the, or consider the approval of the dispersment reports on pages fourteen to twenty-seven of your packet. There are two dispersment reports, one from February first to fifteenth for fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent, and a second one from February sixteenth to February twenty-eighth for nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Another motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I really didn't have any questions.
I didn't have any.
Nor did I.
Going through there.
All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor of approving the dispersment reports, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion passes. Next, we'll consider the approval of the department reports, which is page twenty-eight to fifty of your packets, which includes the new permits, code enforcement issues, police actions, and the new front office logs. Another motion?
I remove acceptance of the departmental reports.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, just one question. Where it says snow removal, I mean, that's...
That was back when it was snow.
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, they're, you're asking about sidewalks here, which...
You're supposed to have...
Are we supposed to still document that? Should we? Do we have that in the documentation, or...
That is, but that's on our enforcement list.
Okay.
So, there were enforcement that people were not, are shoveling their sidewalks.
Oh, you're talking in the business sector?
Yeah.
Okay, not residential.
Yeah.
Okay, because I saw the addresses here, so...
Well, no, there's residential too that weren't doing the sidewalks. So...
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to do your driveway per se, but you do have to keep the sidewalks clear.
Got it.
Accessible.
You're talking about the code enforcement, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's on court.
Those are the only questions I had.
And I had, I had one question as well, on Sue's departmental, or front office report, forty-eight and forty-nine, and thanks, thanks for doing that interim city administrator.
Okay.
Appreciate it. There were several issues with, where it was noted that a combination of dirt and ice was plowed onto, or was, was on people's driveway, and the city's response was, the DPS response was that we were not responsible for clearing that. Was that part of, I mean, we've talked earlier at previous meetings about how the plowing this year has plowed a lot of dirt from the, the city has plowed a lot of dirt into the street. I know it's happened on my street, I know it happened on Mayor Garrett's street, and there was a list of others. In these cases, do we know if that's something that we did? Because if it is, we should be clearing it.
Not if, because you're coming through with the plow truck, you're plowing the snow into it. We might be taking part of their grass, which we will repair the grass in the spring for that.
Right.
But the other thing is, with the plowing, we had a lot of complaints that the streets weren't wide enough, so they were out there trying to widen them. So that's where they were getting into the dirt, because we had a lot of complaints about streets not being wide enough this year.
You mean, wide enough?
Not being plowed wide.
Plowed wide.
Plowed wide enough, so they were going out farther. They probably went out farther than they should have, but we had the complaint, so we were trying to rectify that.
All right, but wouldn't that be our responsibility if we, if we, if we did it? I mean, if the DPS did it, shouldn't they clean it up?
Well, it would be like us going through every driveway, because we put snow in there. And everybody's at the end of their driveway when we come through with a plow truck. Where I live, they do not plow out my, out of my driveway. When they come through, they plow it in, and that's my responsibility, or the, my management company's actually responsibility to do that.
But shouldn't we have some agreed standard? Because, I mean, it's clear, you know, we put a lot of pressure on them to, you know, plow wider, but at the same time, you know, if they plowed too wide, they've got to take ownership of that dirt either being piled up somewhere.
But that's the dirt and snow together going into somebody's driveway, so...
Right, but I think one of the complaints...
They've never done it.
Yeah, one of the complaints, I think it said chunks of sod.
Right.
Right.
We've got to, I mean, we can't wait till, you know, late spring. We had a couple of days where they could at least drive around to assess the damage or what we're actually requesting of them to do, as opposed to waiting till the end of, you know, this winter and starting spring. So, is there any way we could at least have them go out there just to assess it and then give us a...
Well, they can if it's not in the snow, but it's supposed to snow tonight again, so...
Yeah, I mean, we've got to know what it is.
It kind of gets covered up when it snows, so...
Yeah, because I think Mayor Pro Tim Cantor, you know, he cited that, and I saw it, and I think it should be, it should be addressed.
I will talk to the DPS about it and have them drive around.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, any, any other discussion?
No, I can, that's it for me.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of approving the departmental reports, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Department reports are approved. All right, so I guess at that point, we're at the point in the meeting where if anybody has any business that's not on the agenda that they would like to discuss, please come forward, state your name and address, and...
Tom Vogel in Kilburne, it's just, you guys are talking about the snow, hopefully it won't be an issue this year, but it's the, when they, I live on Kilburne, when you get onto Southfield, you can't get onto Southfield because either Southfield dumps their snow on Kilburne.
On the Andes way?
Right, on the Andes. The county road commission does. But I, I noticed Berkeley doesn't have that problem. They seem to clear their streets off, and they got Twelve Mile, let's say Twelve Mile and Side Streets, so I think we can do something. But I, there's a couple of times when we had real bad snowfalls when I was working, I got stuck, and actually the police had combined helped get me out of there.
Yeah, you know, we brought this up before in study session.
No, it wasn't him.
Yeah, so we brought it up before in study session where, you know, we, we've had concerns where, even though the county, they've plowed Southfield, but, you know, we have to take ownership to kind of break up that igloo wall, so that way no one gets stuck between the side streets and Southfield. So we've got to, we've got to correct that.
So you're aware of that type of...
We're aware, we're trying to correct, we're trying to mitigate that.
We think that was a consistent problem this year, by the way.
Yeah, we're just trying to mitigate that.
But you haven't really solved it yet, though.
No, but we're, we're looking, we're talking about...
Maybe go to Berkeley and ask them how they do it.
Yeah, exactly.
They send their trucks through.
Send their trucks through.
Exactly.
You know what I mean, so, but we, we hear you.
I was coming up Twelve Mile, midst of all this really heavy snow we were getting, and I was coming up through Berkeley on Twelve Mile, and going the opposite direction was like, city of Berkeley had five trucks, one behind the other. Now, I didn't watch them to see if they started veering off into the side streets, but I just saw it, it was a little, they certainly took good care of Twelve Mile that day.
They did. Yeah, and looking at, looking at...
They may have the equipment to do it, but it just seems, you know, you almost have to get a running start to get on Southfield, you could have an accident.
Right, exactly.
So your timing could be wrong.
Correct. Yeah, I agree.
That's right.
That's one of the things that we'll be tasking the city manager, the new city manager, which starts, starts on April second, with, it's on our list of things to evaluate that contract.
We've got a year to work on it.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to deal with it for the rest of the...
Let's hope for snow, none of, none in June or July. That'll do us in.
Anyone else? No?
Marilyn Bledian, one seven six five six Roseland. And I agree with him, it was very bad this winter, and on top of that, at Roseland was the outlet suit guy with his van there, or truck there. So you really had to be back on your street, on the residential street, to even have sight of Southfield. So you had to really floor it to get to it, to get through it. But one of the reasons I came tonight was to thank the enforcement code and the council for starting to remove those vehicles from Southfield Road. Because I think I came about two years ago complaining about those advertising vehicles along Southfield Road, in the city of Lathrop only. So I noticed Cash Advance went away, finally, City Outlet guy went away, USBC bowling guy is still there, and Mr. Levy is still there with two vehicles. So I don't know if those are going to be removed or not, or I know what the ordinance says, you have to move it here and there, but that doesn't happen every day. So I don't know if that's going to be stressed upon those particular tenants or businesses to move them or not.
Yeah, do you want to talk about what we've done with them?
We are actively pursuing code enforcement against those properties that are currently in violation, and so you're, you're absolutely correct, as long as they are moving the vehicles and that's...
And they're not.
Yeah, I mean, but there is the challenge, is that we have to, you know, it's whether it's on the police department or the code officer that's only here two and a half days a week, makes it difficult to, to catch them, so to speak, but, but it is something that enforcement is, is taking place now.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. The other thing is, with the rain that we had, and I know everybody, I'm sure, had a lot of rain on their streets, flooding now to street level. At the end of Roseland, the road just kind of erupted. So I don't know what that eruption was, and it's been kind of patched up, and the cones are still there. So I don't know what, does anybody know what caused that?
Water main.
Water main? Okay, so...
And it was, they had patched it up. The road is going to need to be redone, but that's not on the list for this year. But that road is going to need to be redone.
So is that going to stay the way it is?
It's going to be patched, and that's all we can do for right now unless we...
But with the cones there still?
No, they should be removing the cones.
Okay, because that's kind of bumpy, too.
Yeah. But it's going to be something we're going to have to talk about, when is that road going to be done, so...
Okay, and are you guys considering looking at water main pipe renovations? I know it's an expensive thing.
We do it every year.
We do every year, we do a certain number.
Oh, okay, because then goes back...
We've got a regular program for replacing a certain amount each year.
Of our water mains.
So is there like a schedule of what areas are, have a priority, or do you prioritize them somehow?
Oh, yeah, our engineer has a schedule for us that which ones are being done. And they try to do the water main before they do the road surfacing, because then we don't have to dig up the road, we try to do a water main, and then we try to do the road surfacing within the year or two after that.
Okay.
We talked about sharing that schedule with residents, so I think that's going to happen.
That would be nice, yeah, that would be nice, then you might see a reduction in inquiries.
But the schedule is subject to change, because it did change last year, because we do a phased R plan, and that could change from year to year. So we, I know what we're, schedule is for, try to like go out for five years, but we can't guarantee that's going to be the schedule for, but it would be a good place to start.
Well, I would have to imagine that the, the schedule, oh my god, I'm going to make a really bad pun, is fluid. Because, I mean, we had, you know, we had some, several unexpected water main breaks, and if those were on the schedule, then we'd move on to somewhere else.
Right, right.
Sorry for the pun.
That's bad. The other question I have is in regards to the buildings that are owned by Jet. The two that are closest up here by Southfield or by Twelve Mile Road are the probably worst of the two that are down here. And coming this evening, I drove through the alley just to see before I, you know, put my foot in the mouth or something, but the, I could go on for those, and I'm sure you've heard as city council people from other residents that don't necessarily come here, but come to city offices and talk, but those buildings are zoned, I believe, for businesses, office businesses. Not mail, not hair, not massages, not for, you know, I'm sleeping overnight as my home. The parking is overflowing on the weekends, that they go onto the residential side streets.
I'd much mention that, too.
Yeah. Sometimes I wonder how the mailman delivers the mail in some areas, because he has to pull up and then pull back and go around to some vehicles. The wiring in the back of the building is exposed. In one of the buildings, I saw they have air conditioning units that are on cinder blocks. That doesn't sound compliant to me. There's a lot of things that are wrong, not only with the type of tenants that he's attracted there, but, and there's an ebb and flow, and you can tell by the parking lots, when they're full and when they're empty, and... I just don't, the building's falling apart. But I'm sure a lot of you have heard about this, and I want to know what's being done to enforce the types of business that really should be occupied in those places.
All right, I'm going to turn this one over.
I'm sure.
City attorney.
Legally speaking!
We can't really talk much about it, because there is a lawsuit pending right now with respect to those properties and the city's enforcement of their, of their building ordinance and zoning ordinance, so it's something that we're in the process of doing, and they've actually, the property company has filed a lawsuit, requested injunction against the city, so it is something that we're working at in the courts right now.
There is an enforcement program that's ongoing, in other words, to make sure that those buildings are being used and are properly conditioned according to the building code. But we can only move at a pace that, you know, tied up in the courts to get, to do the year enforcement. You have to work your way through that process.
I understand, and I get it.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, because it's a reflection on Lathrop. And to me, and I've said it before, north of this building to Twelve Mile is very congested and very ugly, and I see there's lots of buildings that are up for sale, but nobody's buying them, or if they're buying them, they're kind of doing the same thing, having a business and then bringing clothing stores or some salons. I mean, we are like Salon City and Salon Haven and every kind of thing.
Because, you know, in the corner of Love Mouse, they turned that new building into a salon.
Well, we're the headquarters.
There's nothing in the codes that allow that, you know, that's, there's...
That you mean prevent that?
To prevent that, you mean.
To prevent that, you mean.
You mean to prevent that.
You said allow.
No, they don't stop it.
Huh?
They don't stop.
No, you...
No, they don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The idea of somebody putting in a beauty shop or hair salon, those are legitimate businesses that are eligible to go in a lot of these buildings.
Right.
So the code allows that, they still have to meet certain standards. The building has to be constructed properly, the area, it has to be wired properly, it's got to pass all the building codes, and that is to assure safety of the tenants as well as the customers coming and going.
And I would think also of the residents that live behind those buildings, because if there's a spark of fire...
Yeah.
From exposed wires...
Yeah.
And it spreads, then...
That's what I'm saying, we're in the process of inspecting all those buildings and trying to bring them into conformance, the way they're supposed to be with the building code.
Okay.
So...
I will wait to see what...
We have the same frustrations that you do at watching it.
I'm sure, I'm watching.
That we get tied up with, you know, we get, as the city attorney said, we have a court case that is interfering with our moving forward with enforcing those ordinances on that, on those buildings, but we don't have much choice but to work our way through those court cases when they're brought.
But I thought, they're not just for business offices type of thing, it's any kind of a business can go into those buildings?
Not just any kind. You, you referred to something about people living in a couple of those places.
Yeah, those buildings are...
And that's supposed to do that.
No, I know that.
That's a whole different building code that's required for people to be residents.
Those technically are mixed-use buildings, those are technically mixed-use buildings, so...
Yeah.
That hybrid of business and residential is a concept that the city has embraced. The issue with those specific buildings is that they're not built up to code for that. So if, while it's a permissible use under the zoning ordinance, the buildings themselves are not built up to that code level. So if that were to be, although legally allowable, in order to do it, they have to have the building raised to a standard that will allow for that. And that, therein lies the issue that we're having right now, so...
Okay, yeah, because they're like sixty-year-old buildings.
Yeah, they were built as office buildings.
Yes.
And although the code, zoning ordinance has changed, they have not been kept up to date with the building code.
Okay. And just one last thing about the snow, or no, sorry, about the water. When the city was going through and doing the alleyways and repaving them, the vendor that you had doing it is part of the culprit of closing the culverts, culverts, the ditches I call them, I like them to do. So when they were paving the alleyway, you have a residential over here that had a culvert, and then there would be a culvert, a shallow one on the other side, but when they resurfaced, they closed that other one off. So you're going to have a backlog of water because of the contractor that did the work. Whether it was explained to them or not, don't know, but my neighbor across the street never had that water fill up before, and then I go, you know what? They did this when they did the resurfacing, they closed the other end of the culvert. Just like on my side, the trucks that go in and out of the alley for deliveries, they've sealed that end of it, too. So there's no water flow going from either side. So I, I think that, I think that...
You're talking on Roseland, the two east and west of, of the alleyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's both sides of the alleyways that both sides are closed off, but I don't know where else they did that either. So it was something that I noticed, obviously after the fact.
Thank you, I've written that down, to have DPS look at it.
Good afternoon, my name is James Farrell, I live at two seven zero four zero, Lathrop Boulevard. And I was here about a couple of years or so ago, when I was inquiring about the slow developing, that slow new development next to me, Eleven Mile and Lathrop Boulevard. And at that time, I was asking whether or not it's going to build a wall, and I was assured that they will build a wall. So far, they haven't done it. And they finished the parking lot, and then they left, nothing happened for months. But that parking lot got lots, lots of activities. I've seen all kinds of things go on. People get out, walk the dogs. Saw a young lady get out of her car, go in the back, change a diaper, get a lot of breakdowns. And at one time, they had a dumpster. Everybody came and used the dumpster, it overflowed, so they moved. They got the porta potty, that's been there forever, everybody comes and use that, not workers, no workers out there, still being used. And the unfortunate thing for me is that all of my exits faces that parking lot. I open my garage door, a car can be sitting directly in front of my lot, close enough to read writing on the back of my wall. I walk out my back door, same thing. I sit on my patio, same thing. There are parking slots facing my property, from the front of my yard to the back. One evening, I was getting ready to take my trash out, and as I was coming out, it was getting dark, I saw a car sitting there. So I stopped, I said, I'm going to wait a few minutes, I went back in the house. Ten minutes later, checked, still there. Thirty minutes later, still there. So I called the police, they came and checked it out. Unoccupied, said it was registered to somebody in Hollow Park. So while they were there, I took my trash out, and it sat there all night. For some reason or another, and I want to thank councilperson Ferguson for his initiative in trying to get things going, but so far they haven't done anything. And to add insult to injury, I got a letter about a week ago, and the top of it says, notice of furnishing. Notice of furnishing. And I come to find out, it has my address, it has Majestic Concrete and Messina Concrete. And come to find out, this is akin to a contract lien, a construction lien. It has my legal prescription and everything on here. And I don't understand that, because I have had none whatsoever communication with them about doing anything for me. So I'm having a problem understanding why my property may be subject to some kind of lien.
Is it possible for you to hand that to the city manager, or city attorney?
City attorney.
Attorney? And do you have a copy of that? Is that the original?
No, I was going to, that's original, I was going to bring it, but my...
Could part of it be that your, my name's Tom Vogel.
I heard your name when you said it.
And could be part of that driveway is on easement?
I don't think so. It says, it says, contract, I mean, concrete material. And I see the big concrete trucks coming with that name on there, Messina, and they're building the foundation now, they've been out there for the last three weeks building foundations. So I've seen maybe five, six, seven trucks come in, load, but nothing on my property, nothing on that extension you speak of. By the way, are you the one that bought the home from?
Are you?
Are you the one that bought the home from?
Yeah, my wife.
Right, 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 okay. I forgot his name. Yeah, so that's, that concerns me, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention. I don't know if you have any oversight, someone do anything about it.
Yeah.
Ooh, what is it?
In construction law, when, when a provider of materials or services is about to start a job, they will send, that's required, they send that notice of furnishing, so that in the event they don't get paid by the general contractor, that they can then put a lien on the property. I, I don't know for certain, but my guess is, is that they're providing concrete, and like you indicated, there's a vacated street there that you own half of, and they own half of. That may be why you got that notice. It may be part of the materials for the wall that they're supposed to be building.
Me pay for some of that?
No, no, that, that, they're providing the materials that Messina contracting, or the Messina company.
I mean, why would my property be...
Because part of it, it's going, that easement may be part of it recorded under your parcel number, because there was an unplanted road there, a planted road but undeveloped road that was vacated.
On the north side of the house, there's a road, there's a road down there.
They're not doing anything on this side of it.
No, but it's, you can see where it was road.
But because the parcels are adjacent to them...
They needed it one time.
It was an alley.
Yeah. That, that would be my guess, I don't know for certain, but just looking at it quickly, that would be what, what my guess is.
Are you saying, are you saying it's possible that I may be liable for something they're doing over there?
No, I think it's because they're putting that wall on, on a parcel that's adjacent to yours, maybe, why, why you're getting that notice.
Why would they involve me in it?
I, I don't know.
This is certified letter, I had to sign for it.
Like I said, it's a good question, I don't know, we'll look into it, but it should, it shouldn't, you shouldn't have any liability for it, because you're not the one, you're not a general contractor, and you're not building a wall, and you certainly haven't ordered a bunch of concrete from Messina Concrete, so...
Based on what you just saw, did you see that, does he have any kind of lien on his property?
No, that's a notice of furnishing, that means that they're about to start providing materials, legally they're required to provide... No, that's a notice of furnishing, that means that they're about to start providing materials, legally, they're required to provide that notice so that, typically sent to the general contractor on a job, which I don't know why they would send it to you. But we could, we could inquire as to what, if anything, has been sent to the general contractor, and we can certainly let them know that, you know, you have gotten it and really you shouldn't have, so.
If you could bring in a copy tomorrow and see me, Pam, and I will take a copy and then we'll try to get ahold of the developer on that property and see what's going on with that.
Thank you.
Can you also make a list of what you just stated on camera regarding the misuse of the parking lot, the porta potty issue, and basically the, the wall? Because we, we had a date when that wall was going to go up, I don't know what that date is anymore. Because I think it's beyond the four.
Well, they started pulling their permits, I know they started pulling permits and they've paid for permits to be pulled. And the first thing they had talked to Ken about, because you've talked to Ken.
Right.
And Ken said that the first thing they talked about was building that wall. So, that's where, if you bring that in tomorrow, I'll also find out where we're at with that wall for you.
Will do.
Okay.
Okay, can you keep myself and Mayor Pro-Tim?
Keep the city administrator.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you get stuck, then you know you could, you have recourse, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, next is where we would normally open up the zoning board of appeals, but we don't have anything on the agenda there, so we will skip that. And move on to the, the action requests. So, the, the next thing we'll look at is the city council will consider a motion to approve the city administrator's contract. So, city attorney, would you like to?
Yeah, we, we had an opportunity, Mayor Garrett, myself, Mayor Pro-Tim Cantor, we had an opportunity to sit down with Dr. Cheryl Mitchell and negotiate the contract under the direction of city council. We did do that, the, I guess the highlights, you have it in your packet, but the highlights of it, we did agree to a compensation of a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. There are going to be, for, the first year be quarterly evaluations, ninety, eighty, two, a hundred, sorry, ninety, a hundred and eighty, two hundred and seventy days from the effective date. And then down the one-year mark, and then ever, from there on out, it would be an annual review. The severance package was revised from the former administrator's package. That's now a thirty-day severance package in the event of separation. And that's, other than that, most of the other terms remain consistent with the model contract.
Do you have a motion to consider?
Well, I mean, I'd make the motion first, then I'd back a question, so.
Second? Second. All right, any discussion?
In section six, under automobile, first paragraph, I A deals with the monthly, some of the, item B, employee, there's a standard mileage rate for reimbursement of anything beyond fifty miles. Is that over and above, for example, if the person, we're, we're providing a car allowance of so much a month? Right?
Right.
And if he, if he or she goes more than fifty miles, he's going to get reimbursed for a mileage rate over and above that monthly? Is that what this?
For business use, yes, so it's not if they live more than fifty miles away, they can't track that on.
I knew that.
But if we send them to a conference in Macanaw City or something, that, that the city will. And again, that's, that's been consistent.
I just wanted to make sure if that's what it really said. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I had two minor things. In section five, paragraph B, it should probably be up to a hundred and eighty-six days? Does up a hundred and eighty, this is a typo? And then, and then the other issue was on paragraph C. I think what was meant to say there, since the employee is entitled to accrue five days a year, I think what we talked about was roll over five days a year. Because that could be, that could be misunderstood in relation to section A.
Or bank five days.
Yeah, or bank five, five days a year. And you might want to say vacation days. Because wasn't it, yeah, vacation leave, A was vacation leave, so we should probably refer to it as vacation there.
Yeah, we had a question, going back to.
Well, did it, was the answer that it's up to five days?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Five vacation days.
Yeah.
Okay. Just one question.
Well, let's, let's not leave that one yet.
Which one, the same one?
Is it just vacation days?
Yes, it's just vacation.
Because I'm not sure that's what it says.
It's, uh, C.
It's because the, the section deals with both vacation and sick leave. And you get so many days of vacation, you get so many days of sick leave. If they're entitled to accrue and save, in other words, bank five days a year.
Correct, my understanding of it and how it was presented during the negotiations is that the employee has access up to a hundred and eighty days of sick leave. That's in a situation where a long-term dissipate.
Right, there's long-term disability policy, right.
That those are, you can't use a hundred and sixty, eighty-six days a year if they've got.
I understand that.
Frequent colds or something of that nature.
We're talking about section C? No, B.
No, I was.
I was talking about section C.
Yeah, section A is thirty, thirty days.
So, whether you're really accruing vacation or sick time that you're carrying over.
You're only, you're only allowed.
It's only vacation time.
Well, yeah, if you make the adjustment and make it vacation, yeah, it's stated there.
Right.
But if it wasn't, if we didn't make the adjustment, it could be misconstrued.
No, because you can't, again, you can't use those sick day bank for just, if you're out of vacation days and you want to take another day off, you can't use one day out of your hundred and eighty.
Oh, I get it.
Or two days out of your hundred and eighty.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we make the adjustment and add vacation, we should be okay? The, the word vacation.
Yeah, I'll change it to roll over vacation days, so that it's clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I had a question, so the, the fifty miles, that will always start from a point of employment, right? So, from the city to wherever the person's going to travel.
Yeah, it says fifty miles from city hall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have one here, but I think you may have answered it. All right, there's all the discussion, all those in favor of approving the city administrator's contact, say aye.
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 Oppose? Contract is approved.
When did she start?
April second.
April second.
April second, we saw her today at the state of the city, and she's, she's excited to get started, so. We're looking forward to it. All right, the next thing we'll discuss is consider a motion to approve a resolution expanding the membership of the planning commission. And I'll, I'll go ahead and introduce that since I'm the planning commission liaison.
Okay.
Basically, what we talked about at the planning commission is we thought it would be a good idea to move the number of, of members of the commission up from five to seven so that we would get a bigger variety of, of input, more diverse variety of input. And then also, you know, when people can't make it to a meeting, then, you know, we, we tend to not have a quorum. So, we wanted to make sure that we will always have enough to be able to have the, the planning commission meetings. So, we, we talked about putting together a proposal, or a motion, and what was it, a proposal?
Resolution.
Which we've drafted and need to discuss. So, is there a motion to consider the resolution? So, move.
Move to approve the resolution, don't you mean?
Yeah, move to approve that. Yeah, so move. Second, okay, any discussion? Were you not getting quorum with five? Um, well, obviously, I'm new to that, but they were saying that they were having problems and sometimes having people not show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay. And I'll just add real quick that when we created the planning commission, the ordinance originally allowed for either five or seven. So, initially, we elected five, this is just, we didn't have to amend the ordinance, just activating those additional two members. And those two members will come from residents of the city. And then it'll still be the one city council member that sits as a liaison on that, on that commission.
Okay, that's some reassurance there, so. So, we approved today, then what's the next step for you guys?
And the mayor, well, people apply and the mayor appoints, correct?
Uh, yeah, the council will appoint.
Yeah.
And the council approves.
Are you posting, or how, how are you doing that?
Yeah.
The mayor will.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, any more discussion? All right, so, vote all in favor of approving the resolution to expand the membership of the planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? And the motion passes. Last, we, the city council will consider a motion to approve an agreement for lockup services with the city of Berkeley. And I believe Lieutenant Zang, are you going to talk about that, or? Oh, is he sergeant or lieutenant? I was giving, giving.
Sergeant.
Sorry.
He's a sergeant.
Yeah. I just, I think I just promoted you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're doing a good job.
You want that in the minutes too, right?
We don't have much to add, but, but the resolution is to adopt agreement services between us and the city of Berkeley to use their jail system for lockups and arrests. As far as I know, they, they adopted it through their city council, and so we're doing the same, we're working out some insurance questions. But I think our treasurer has something to add to that.
Yes, I have talked to our MML, who is our liability property pool, and they have said that there would be no cost to little cost, if any, only depending on if they have employee changes in wages, so, which I don't think they will. And also, you guys have been taking our prisoners and our lockups to Oakland County. So, this agreement is to save our, our men in our police department and women employee, or hours, so that they're not running up to Oakland County all the time, they're being able to go right to Berkeley with them. So, that's what we're trying to do, is to help our police department to be able to be in Lathrop more often and not running up to Oakland County all the time. So, that's why we would like to have this agreement.
So, reduce hours worked from here to Oakland County?
Correct, yeah, we'll have officers in service.
Does Oakland County charge us now a per diem for lockup?
Well, they have restrictions on who we can lock up. And there, there's a couple of specified classes, we have fresh domestic violence arrests that they'll lock up, fresh drunk driving arrests, and any felony, any type of felony, whether it be a warrant or a fresh arrest they'll take. They don't take anything else. Berkeley will actually allow us to house anybody that we, that we arrest.
So, where do we go with those cases now?
We don't, we don't have a lockup.
Okay.
So, this is imperative for us to start making this.
So, there's really no, we don't incur expense for this right now because we can't do it.
Correct.
Because the county will take them and we don't have another alternative.
That's correct.
So, the costs involved for us is our cost of tying up a policeman, taking the folks we, that Oakland County will take.
Correct.
Out there, which is a lot further than Berkeley, obviously.
Right, and from what I understand, it's also not just an issue of the drive time, but a lot of times you guys get there and it could be two or three hours that it takes to process them, and you guys have to stick around.
Well, it depends on the situation, it depends on the type of arrest. But generally, I mean, the sheriff's department is pretty, they're, they're good when we drop people off, so they're.
And is, and I don't know, the city attorney, do you draw this up, or?
Uh, this, this agreement actually did come from, from another community.
Okay.
Where have been in use previously. I did have some, when Chief McKee brought it to me initially, we did make some revisions before it was modified for Berkeley and Lathrop. And the last thing that we've referenced was the insurance coverage stuff, and I, I believe we have a satisfactory answer for that. So, I'm comfortable with the language of this agreement.
Yeah, my, my, the question I had in here though was, was it, was it, I was confused with what I heard before and what I saw here in terms of, it says it's a hundred dollars per occasion, is it a hundred dollars per occasion or a hundred dollars per day that the prisoners that, that were charged?
Well, the situation that'll work out with Berkeley is when we actually make the arrest, they'll be processed through Berkeley. And then once they're processed through the court, the court can remand anybody to Oakland County jail, it can be any arrest. So, yeah, it'll be one day at Berkeley, they'll be arraigned and they'll be sent to, however they, they work out, either released on bond or sent to the county.
We used to have an agreement with Beverly Hills to do this.
That's correct.
And I understand that cost was about the same as what Berkeley's talking about.
Correct.
A hundred dollars per occasion.
Correct, however, they got rid of their dispatchers and they couldn't do prisoner watch. Beverly Hills ended up using Birmingham and then left us kind of.
Right. So, we've basically been without something we've dated.
That's correct.
Okay, the only other thing I have is on page sixty-three, third line, section B, there's a typo. It says, shall tum over to Berkeley instead of turn over.
Section B.
Section B, third, fourth sentence down. Beverly Hills Village Officer shall tum over, first line.
Well, they can tum over.
Yeah, they can, they can tum it over.
Well, they're going to tum them over.
Yeah, they're going to tum them over.
Turnover, perhaps.
All right, so any other?
Don't want any tum expenses on top of everything else.
Any other discussion?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
I mean, no.
Did we?
No, we didn't.
I approve approval of this contract.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, and let's vote on whether or not to approve the agreement for lockup services between the cities of Berkeley and Lathrop Village. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those oppose? Motion carries. And then the last item was tabled, so that will be tabled till, till April second, which is talking about the, considering the contract of Police Chief McKee. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to the Madam Interim City Administrator for anything you have to report.
Yes, I want to let everybody know to get their bunny tickets for Breakfast with the Bunny, which is going to be this Saturday from nine to eleven. And we are preparing for a good breakfast and lots of fun for the kids, so make sure you get your tickets early so we can prepare properly. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. City attorney?
You've heard enough from me tonight, some more.
Okay.
Amen.
Rest of the council, any, any other business, or Madam Clark? Okay. Oh, go ahead, it's fine. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a brief announcement that to remind everyone, May eighth is a special election. And if you are not registered to vote, please do so by April ninth before four thirty, if you're going to register in the city clerk's office. Or you can register online at Michigan.gov, or you can go to any secretary of state's office and register to vote. Thank you.
Anything?
Nope, nothing for me.
Nope. Okay, the only thing I would add is, we're moving forward on our recreation director, we have an offer out there and we're, we're waiting to hear. We had a couple of great candidates that we interviewed last week, and hopefully, well, hopefully we'll hear tomorrow, and hopefully have a new recreation director, so. Just fill in the gaps. Yeah, fill in the gaps. So. Any other? No, nothing. Okay, do we have a motion to conclude the meeting? This is rare. I don't want to hold you guys up. I make a motion to adjourn this council meeting.
Support.
Yep, all those in favor?
It's our last meeting.